Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Apex Town Council meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for March 5th, 2019. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Like to first, before we get started, just thank everybody for coming out here. As I like to do, I welcome this time for wisdom and guidance from above, and I hope everybody will join me in doing the same. Join me, please, for a few seconds of silence as we do that. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to everyone who's here. I hope you got a chance to grab a copy of the agenda which was out on the podium. There's also a yellow sheet for the public forum and public hearing speaking policies. So if you intend to speak, you need to have one of these in your hands so you can be familiar with the rules and guidelines. And also, if you intend to speak tonight at one of the items, please sign your name on the appropriate sheet. Double check the top to make sure you're signing the correct sheet for the item that you wish to speak in. This time, I'll turn to our presentations on our agenda. We have three tonight, and we will begin with Chief Keith McGee from the Fire Department, who has, I guess, an announcement or a designation, it sounds like.
It is. It's a designation. It's okay if I come up here and kind of...
Please do. Yeah, that would be fine.
I'll kind of speak to everybody. So, this is to recognize David Dillon for achieving what's called the Fire Officer Designation through the Center of Public Safety Excellence, specifically the Commission on Professional Credentialing. David joins, he's now one of 453 credentialed fire officers in the world. It's an international system. Think about it, 453. There's roughly 30,000 fire departments in America. So, this is a big deal. So, we're very proud of David. David took, as we introduce these things, David took his training, his years of documentation and all of that, and he had to basically certify and validate in seven critical areas, and he's done that. It's been reviewed by peer that's actually trained to review these, to look at the quality and the credentials. And then he goes before the Commission on Professional Credentialing where they review the application, and then ultimately bestow the designation upon him. So, David, congratulations, and thank you for showing the professionalism.
Did you have a speech prepared there, Mr. Dillon?
I would like, moment of personal privilege if I may. As we head toward this weekend, we know we're going to spring forward and set our clocks ahead, so those of you who need new air you're smoking on, it's a great time to...
You know, at some level, I'm not surprised, and the other level, I'm still just gobsmacked.
You had the opportunity to say whatever you wanted, thank anybody up here, but you said, "Change your batteries." Actually, my plan is I wait until the thing starts beeping. That's probably not the best plan. Yeah, I could probably do better. Thank you for challenging me on that.
I found if you wait longer, it'll quit beeping.
It does? Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations. We're very proud of you. But, you know, of course, this also means you don't get to leave our town now, so you're credentialed here. You pretty much need to hang your career here. Welcome. I'm glad you're here. We'll go on now to presentation number two. We welcome Beth Bordeaux of the Western Wake Crisis Ministries.
I'm coming. All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you, for all your support for Western Wake Crisis Ministry over the many years. We're like 36-years-old now, this organization in the Apex area. I want to share with you our vision, to seek a brighter future for all by cultivating a healthy, hunger-free, and housing-stable community. Our mission is to partner with those in crisis, helping them to gain stability through basic supports of food, financial and housing assistance, education and opportunity. And we value equity, we value compassion, we value relationship, optimism, vision, impact, and we value our community. I'd like to share with you some of the work that we've done here in Apex, how your funds are making a difference, and some of the needs that we've seen, and some of the ways that we're planning to live into this mission over the next few years. Let me start with a couple of stories. Marge is a mother of three, and she's a certified CNA. Her prior living situation was substandard, and it resulted in a fire. She struggled to get out of that fire and ended up with some injuries that created a need for surgery, that then created a need for being out of work for several months. During that time, of course, she lost her housing that was burned. She was living with friends and kind of bouncing around. We helped her rehouse, get into a new place, and she's back working again. But even as she's working as a CNA, getting as many hours as you can, because you know most CNAs, they're contract work, so getting as many hours as she can. Her salary is $13.75 an hour, and her monthly income ranges between $1,500 and $1,700 a month. So if she were to pay 30% of her income for her housing, that's about $510 a month that she can afford for housing. She's obviously paying more than that. Roger was living in an accessory dwelling unit over someone's garage, and he'd been living there for years. And then, he was, the people who owned the house sold the house, and he had to move. He had no place to go. For at least a couple of years now, he has been displaced. He bounces around, living with one person and then another. He's living off of his retirement, he's in his 70s, living off of his retirement and social security. His total monthly income is $1,200 a month. So 30% of his income for housing would be $400 a month. We have not been able to find him a place to stay at this point. We're continuing to work with him. These are just two of the many of the folks that we're working with on a regular basis. I recently read in the Advanced Apex Study that median rent in Apex is $1,162 a month. That's an increase of 26% since 2010. The percent of households paying more than 35% of their income is also on the rise, particularly for those who are renting. Even as our population is rising, the percent of that population is following suit with those folks who are unable to pay less than a cost burden amount for their rent. In 2018, Western Wake Crisis Ministry saw 15% more people coming in for services per month than we were seeing in 2017. So we're close to 300 people per month coming in. And they can come in once every 30 days, so that's kind of like a regular pattern of when we are able to see folks. Folks are increasing the number of times that they're coming to see us, so we're seeing folks with a deeper need, is what that is showing. When we see folks, it used to be two to three times a year, now we're seeing them five-plus times a year. The total number of visits is close to 5,000. In 2017, we actually added evening hours so that we could accommodate the increases in numbers that we were seeing. We've increased the distribution of food by 9%, and we've increased financial and resource assistance by 12%. Those are just in the last year. 98% of the folks that we're working with are Apex residents, so they're coming from this community. And 80% of the folks that receive financial assistance are Apex residents. How have we responded to the need that we've seen? First, I would say we're strengthening our organizational capacity. So we received a grant from Triangle Community Foundation so that we could do capacity building, and we also use that to do our strategic plan this year. We listened to our stakeholders, including our clients. We did research on best practices, and we looked at local data to help us discern how to move forward with a strategic plan. On paper, our budget's over $1 million because of all the food that we get donated. Most of that is in-kind donations. Our cash budget is around $300,000 a year. So we've never really been required to have an audit because of the size of our budget, and we've never had a funding source that has required us to have an audit, yet still this year, we contracted with Bernard Robinson to review our financial practices and to give us an agreed-upon practices and procedures so that we can prepare ourselves for having an audit soon. Our board members, our staff, and our volunteers are being more trained than ever before. We had 35 volunteers go through mental health first aid training and become certified. Some of those are our core volunteers that are coming on a regular basis and working face-to-face with clients. Over half of our board has been to some kind of board development training, a board bootcamp or something of that sort. We've increased the number of volunteers that are working with us. We have over 130 volunteers that are coming on a regular basis. That doesn't even count the ones who come on weekends, and, you know, groups of volunteers and youth groups and that kind of thing. But we have 130 volunteers who are coming in like once a week. Some of our volunteers are back here in purple today. We have a community outreach team that we started this year that's going out into the communities and telling folks about Western Wake Crisis Ministry and the work that we're doing. We're sending home flyers with students and schools. We're going to have a free farmer's market this summer in some of the neighborhoods that are the most needy that we've started to work with, so that we can get the word out and let them know what we have to offer. We've enhanced our services in the past year, and these are some of the core things that we've done to increase our services to the community based on the needs that we were seeing. So, home delivery, we have found that with a lot of the folks that we're working with and the aging populations, some of them are getting to where they can't drive, they can't get to us, or they're disabled and they can't get to us. So we've started a home delivery program where we actually bring their groceries to them once a month. The Home Project is a project where we have started to work with folks who are having particular difficulties and almost losing their housing, so they're at high risk of becoming homeless, or maybe they're already, like the gentleman I was telling you about earlier, who's living with other people or living at a hotel, but not literally homeless. We are working with those folks who have vulnerable persons in their households, like an elderly person, someone with a disability, or a child. So in particular, those households that we don't want to see living in their car in Apex. We don't want to see folks living in their car at our Walmart parking lot, and we don't want to see those folks having to enter the homeless service system in Raleigh because of the vulnerabilities that they're already experiencing. So we started this project to help rehouse those folks and get them stabilized. We hired an MSW social worker this past year to be able to work directly with that program and with our resource, financial resource program to help strengthen that. And then finally, Resource Connection workshops. So we're having workshops now on renter-tenant landlord relationships, and how to get the most out of your SNAP benefits, and how to find quality childcare, and those kinds of things for the families that we work with. We check with them, what do you need to learn about, and that's the kind of things that we bring to folks at least once a month. Our strategic plan, basically, I know I'm probably running out of time at this point, but in our strategic plan, there's three core areas over the next couple of years that we're going to be looking at. One is continuing to increase access to services, continuing to help and make sure that folks who need our services are able to get them. Reducing food and housing insecurity, those are our core values in this community. And then strengthening our organizational excellence and continuing to be the best organization we can be. I just want to again say thank you, guys, so much for all that you've offered this organization. We would not be here if it were not for your support over the many years that you've been here supporting us and supporting the citizens of Apex. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bordeaux, and I'd like to also extend on behalf of the council, thanks to all the volunteers and the donors who have given of their time and money, and we appreciate what you do for the Western Wake community.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right, the third, yep, thank you. Our third presentation is Keith Withrow from Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as CAMPO. Mr. Withrow.
Thank you all very much, and good evening. Again, thank you all very much for this privilege of being here and sharing with you all this new iteration of the Southwest Area Study. We did the original one in 2012, and this is basically an update. But what I'm sharing with you all at this particular moment is the current status of the update as it stands right now. What I'll do, in the number of slides I have, I'll just go quickly over them, but then at certain points, I will pause to let you all know, points of emphasis that I want to address at this moment in time. Thank you very much. Again, this is a study done every four to six years, which addresses transportation needs in this portion of the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and largely focuses on southwestern Wake and northwestern Harnek County, and features the communities of Apex, Holly Springs, Fuquay Varina, and Anger. It is a part of the transportation planning process, what NPOs are required to do as a legal entity. And what I want to basically share with you, since 2012, things have changed in that landscape. We've had the Strategic Transportation Investment Law that passed back into 2013. We have on the local level what are called the Local Administrative Projects Program, which funds small projects throughout the region. And of course, since 2016, of course, we have the Wake County Transit Plan and Tax. This basically shows the general area of the southwest area, as I mentioned before, and what it encompasses and what we're studying, and the local governments and entities that are working with us and partnering with us as we go through this particular study. The information I'm sharing with you right now includes the Stakeholders Oversight Team, which basically consists of the elected officials and other groups who get information from the technical, core technical team, which basically includes staff who review information with us in conjunction with the consultant team to review plans and programs, and once that is presented to them, they forward the information to the SOT. What's the basic framework of the update and what we're doing? Basically, looking at people, places, and how they are connected in this region. We're going to complete this study by the summer of this year, looking to have a comprehensive strategy to address the major problems that we're facing on the highways that you see here, from NC 540 to NC 55, US 401, NC 42, and NC 210. And basically, in doing this study, we have guiding principles that we utilize. They are livability, mobility, and accessibility, technology, since that's very key in this day and time, and sustainability, making sure that this area, as it continues to grow, continues to be economically viable and a great place to be. Some of the changes I want to share with you in comparisons from the 2012 SWAS plan that was adopted to today, there's a difference in TIP funding, or Transportation Improvement Program funding in the area. Back when this was originally done, 75% of the funds, of course, went to Western Wake Freeway, but there were $876 million in projects for this area, and in the newest TIP, there are over $1 billion associated with funds for this area in terms of projects. Of course, 81% of that's going to the Southern Wake Expressway, or Complete 540 as we understand it, and these are the projects before you that are being examined at this particular moment in time or have been included in the funding stream. The important thing we've recognized, and you all have done this with regard to the Advanced Apex Plan, is recognize the importance of transportation and land use and its connection. When you have changes in land use, there are going to be changes in transportation, and you see how it is circular in terms of its impact, okay? So transportation and land use go hand in hand. One of the things I want to go to is transit at this particular moment in time and just share with you, of course, the Wake Bus Plan as it stands. This has what is approved as a Vision Plan through 2027. The Southwest Area Study is going to look beyond this, but I just wanted to highlight where we stand right now in terms of, since the tax had been approved, what we're looking to plan out over the next 10 years. The thing that I want to emphasize at this particular moment in terms of congratulatory form, is with regard to community funding areas, the town of Apex applied for a community funding application, and the selection committee, as told to me by the transportation or transit manager for the Capital Area NPO, informed me that the selection committee has selected your application to go forward with in terms of community funding area. So that's good news with regard to that, so I'm pleased to share that to you today. Active modes, these involve biking, walking, and help place. And I'll just quickly highlight what was in last year's recommendations, and how, what is included in the Advanced Apex Plan is also shown in, or will be shown, in the Southwest Area Study. But the important thing is just noting the values of the connections and what's going on in various other communities. We're trying to extend and increase those connections to benefit regional travel along with and complement the local travel that you all have in terms of greenway and bikeway creation. The thing I want to quickly stop on is just safe routes to schools. One of the things that's important that I want to note with regard to safe routes to schools is, in the last plan, we focused, of course, on roads, bike and bus, yes, but this element was not included because schools and safe routes to schools have been considered an afterthought. We're now making sure that we take into account not only the movement of regular motor vehicles, but kids walking and biking to school. And we've been working with the town of Apex on other issues, one is relates to Apex Friendship High School, but this focuses on elementary and middle schools, and we looked at 10 schools and what can be done to improve those particular schools. We've also, and are looking at roads and cars as standard, and we're incorporating what you have in terms of your Apex, Advanced Apex Plan into our SWAS study, or Southwest Area Study. So your staff, in conjunction with staff from the other communities, are working with our consultant to ensure that what you all have worked on is truly incorporated into the Southwest Area Study. We also are addressing safety, noting that every 17 minutes, there is a crash in Wake County, and one out of three include an injury. The other thing that I want to quickly highlight are the hotspots in our area, or in this area. The two significant hotspots are NC 751 and NC 55, and of course, the rest are in the other communities. What we're looking at is seeing how we can extend NC 51 beyond its current route designation, and how it can go further down toward Fuquay Varina to serve as an additional alternative route to NC 55. And with regard to NC 55, we're looking at ways to improve the movement of traffic in this hotspot corridor, where we have a tremendous amount of traffic throughout the day, particularly during commuting times, that is either going between Holly Springs and Apex during the peak, particularly ABM and PM peak, that are accessing that area. And of course, I just mentioned the hotspot with regard to NC 751. The other thing I want to quickly share with you are the grade separations that we're looking at for your area. We recognize the value of the CSX corridor, and so we're looking at where we can incorporate grade separations from Law Duncan Road all the way to New Hill Olive Chapel Road toward the west. So those are things that we're studying. Again, these are a work in progress. The thing that I want to share with you too, we've received a lot of public input with regard to the plan over the past few months, and we're getting input from throughout the southwest area, and even beyond the southwest area. So we do appreciate you all, your participation in this process with regard to it, and we encourage you all to be involved in that. And the website that you see at the bottom of the page is where you can provide comment and just gather data associated with the Southwest Area Plan. The big thing and the reason why I'm here and want to share this information with you is there's going to be a public meeting in the town of Holly Springs on Tuesday, April 23rd, and we want to encourage all of you all, all of you all, to come to that meeting. This is a final opportunity to share what we will have, been a culmination of information from that, from the Southwest Area Study, for you all to give your input. I've given Shannon some cards that she will be handing out tomorrow that are in English and Spanish that encourage you all to share with your friends, relatives, whomever you know that would be willing to come out to this event. And it will be at the Holly Springs Community Center, again, Tuesday, April 23rd. And the next steps after the workshop include releasing the draft report in June, formal public comment from June to August, presentations to the board, so I'll be coming back here again in July or August, and we'll endorse it, the plan, by August 21st. So with that in mind, thank you all very much for this opportunity, and look forward to seeing you all in future meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Withrow. All right, this concludes our presentations for the day. So we'll now move to Consent Agenda, which is on the next page. At this time, Consent Agenda is considered to be non-controversial and typically enacted by a single motion. As always, a council member can remove something for discussion if they wish. I've not heard of anything, so I'll ask at this time if there's a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
All right, we have a motion, a second discussion on approval of the consent. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. We now move to setting the regular agenda. I've not heard anything that needs to be added or deleted or shifted, anything from council. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
No.
One second.
Discussion. All in favor of the agenda as submitted indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move into public forum, and as the town council, sorry, as the town clerk brings the signup sheets, just as a reminder, if you didn't get one of these yellow sheets, be sure to grab one. Even if you didn't get one and you don't plan to speak tonight, you can take it home with you and read it, so the next time you come, you'll be familiar with it. It is good reading. We now have the public forum. Have you checked them? It is good reading. We now have the public forum, and I'll open the public forum and call the first and only person who signed up, Ms. Susan Davis. And as you're coming up, I'll just remind you to state your name and address and watch the green, yellow, red lights there.
Thank you.
All right. Please stand in front of the microphone there, if you don't mind. Oh, can somebody, I'm sorry, Shannon or somebody, could you move the keyboard down? I think that's, thank you. Wanted to make sure she has all the room she needs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the Apex Town Council, my name is Susan Davis. My husband David and I live at 217 Saunders Street, directly across the street from what used to be the Apex Senior Citizens Park. As you know, a plan to expand the Apex Police Department parking lot is now being executed. So are all the big oak trees that have occupied that space for many years. Over the past five days, we have watched one of the finest old trees in Apex being dismantled to make way for concrete and asphalt. We have lived in Apex for over 30 years, the last 16 of which have been at our current location. We are grateful that we have been in a position... We are grateful that we have been in a position to enjoy the trees across the street from our house. Their loss will greatly impact our place in practical and aesthetic ways. We're aware that it's too late for us to influence the decision to cut these trees, but we still want to make an argument for old magnificent trees in Apex. Old trees are inconvenient. They stand in the wrong places. They drop tons of leaves and bits of dead limbs all over the place. Sometimes, like other senior citizens, they fall over on cars, houses, maybe even people. But they also offer some things that young, more vibrant trees can't: a sense of majesty, permanence, history, endurance, and deep, deep shade; a sense of home that no young, non-native tree will ever be able to match. As people who love and study birds, we know the importance of old native trees to wildlife, the larvae and insects that live on their bark, and the cavities where birds like woodpeckers, owls, and brown-headed nuthatches can seek shelter and build their nests. When we devalue these trees, we devalue our children's natural heritage. The plan to expand the Police Department parking lot seems to us to be a short-term gain, some parking places that will be outgrown before many years, in exchange for a permanent loss of historical character, cooling shade for our town, stormwater uptake, cleaner air, and green space for the future. We hope for better decisions in, for future town projects. We also want to tell you that we appreciate all the ways that this board is working to make Apex green.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Having no one else on the list, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, public forum. And we now move into public hearings. Public hearing number one is Amanda Bunce. And this is related to UDO changes.
Good evening. So, there are two UDO amendments that I'll bring to you tonight. And they are relatively simple. So, we've adopted Advanced Apex. We now have a 2045 land use map. And so, the first amendment is to simply change all references to 2030 land use map to 2045 land use map. Those are the sections affected in the UDO. Fairly straightforward. Any questions? Okay. The second amendment is to add the language, "All members of the planning board," and then in the next section, "Board of Adjustment," shall have voting power on all matters of business. And this is to clarify that our ETJ member on each board can vote on all matters. It doesn't just have to be an item that falls within the ETJ. And so, that language is being added to both the Planning Board section and the Board of Adjustment membership section. Same wording in both.
Was that unclear before?
So, this language has always been in our rules of procedure. But we were just advised that it should be in the, in the ordinance as well. And so, we're just adding that language. It's essentially what's in the rules of procedure now.
Had it come up in any meetings questioning the voting power of the ETJ person?
I don't believe anybody had questioned that from the, from the public or a member of a board.
Okay.
To my knowledge. Okay. That's it. Our planning board heard this at their February 11th meeting and unanimously recommended approval.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bunce. Any questions for Ms. Bunce before we go to the public hearing? All right. Thank you very much. We opened the public hearing. And since no one has signed up, we'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council for discussion leading to a motion.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Bunce. We now move to public hearing number two. Joanna Helms, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, everyone. So, I wanted to just take a minute at the beginning to reiterate what our economic development policy is for incentives real quick. So, I'll go through that as far as the policy and the eligibility requirements. The town of Apex incentive policy is referred to as our Development and Investment Grant and was approved by the town council in December of 2016. The objective of the grant is to encourage the location retention or expansion of newer existing industry of business in the town of Apex that will create jobs and private investment. The grant is based upon the investment made by the company and the annual taxes paid on that investment. A business or industry may be eligible for the grant if they meet both a new investment threshold of $3 million and a new jobs created threshold of 20 jobs and a wage rate that is at or above the Wake County average. In addition, the business or industry must have another location choice and competition with the proposed Apex location. This policy pertains to business or industry locating or located within the town of Apex corporate limits. And finally, the business or industry should also be in the decision-making process and not have previously announced or decided to make their expansion or location in the town of Apex. So, that is the policy as it's stated and approved. Now, for this project, project summary for Project Protein. And these projects do go by codenames because they are confidential in nature until such time that they are announced. But Project Protein represents a bio-ag industry project. This company actually creates an enzyme that acts as an additive to animal feed to improve that feed and make it healthier for the animals. They are proposing to build a new 50,000-square-foot facility. This facility would, would host both their research and development operation and their company headquarters. The total new jobs to be created would be forty. The average annual wage would be 61,000, which exceeds the Wake County annual average of 56,000. There'll be some that will be higher than that, but that's, that's the average on the low side. The total investment for this project is right around seven million. It could go a little higher, but right now they're, they're saying seven million is a good number to project. The competition for this project are locations in the state of Kentucky and the state of Ohio. They are looking at a 10-acre site in the Cache Corporate Center just off the end of Production Drive. And so, I'm going to show you where that is. So, this is Cache, sorry, I've got too many things up here. This is Cache Corporate Center here outlined in red. Just a few landmarks here is Night's Play. Here is the existing Pinnacle Park with Burma Drive coming down here to access the site and Production Drive coming down here to access the site. And of course, this is Lufkin Road coming around here with Apex Tool Group here. And then one is here. And then 55, whoa, 55 down this way. This is hard to drive a little bit. Okay. So, that's the location of Cache Corporate Center. And then, as far as the actual where on Cache Corporate Center, so just remember that, that same rectangle. And this is the proposed site here, which would come just off the end. This is the end of Production Drive right in here. Now, please keep in mind that what you're looking at is a conceptual plan. This is not necessarily how this site will be developed out. This is just one concept. But this site here is the particular site that this project is considering. And again, it would come directly off the end of Production Drive here. As far as the proposed incentive scenario, the grant will be awarded to the company, would be based again upon the investment they've made and the taxes paid on that investment. The tax grant awarded to Project Protein would be determined as follows. The proposed investment is seven million. Sorry, let me get to the next slide. The proposed investment is seven million. Based upon that, the company would pay approximately $29,050 in annual taxes. The town would award a grant in the amount of 90% of the taxes paid, which equals 26,145. So, that would be the annual incentive. And the grant would be awarded for a period of over three years as per policy. So, for a total incentive of 78,435. That would be the proposed scenario for this particular project based upon their investment and the town's current tax rate. And I will stop there. See if there's any questions. A company representative was on his way. I think he may have been a little delayed, but he wanted, he wanted to be here as well.
Okay. All right. At this time, we have a public hearing for this. So, I'll open the public hearing. And looking at the sheet, no one has signed up to speak on this. So, I'll also close the public hearing. And there's no motion or vote necessary, at least not according to the agenda. Just says it's, receive public input. Do you need, do you need a motion? What is the motion proposal then?
Can we ask questions?
What do you need? Yeah. Do you have questions?
Yeah. So, is there any, we're not getting information about the land part of the, any deal, correct?
No, this is, this is just a consideration for the tax, for the development incentive grant as outlined on.
Okay.
As outlined here. Sorry.
Okay.
And, and your range of investment was four to seven. You're thinking it's going to be either probably more around seven or above?
Correct. That's what they're, that's what they're indicating at this time. But of course, it'll all be based upon whatever it is.
Right.
So, you're, it's, it's always going to be exactly what it is. So...
And 20 jobs is pretty set, though.
Forty.
Forty jobs.
Twenty was the minimum to qualify.
To qualify, correct.
To qualify, okay, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what is on the sheet in front of you. But if the council would so choose to have a motion this evening, that would be great.
Okay. What is the ask then? Maybe I'll look.
So, just confirm.
Okay.
So, it's, it's a motion to approve the incentive grant as outlined by...
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So, the motion is to approve the incentive grant for Project Protein as presented today. Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second discussion.
This is fantastic. I'm excited to see that we're moving. I know Bill and I worked really hard on this in Economic Development Committee for three years and got a policy in place. And I think this is exciting to see this happen. So...
All right.
It's good to see it move ahead.
Thanks for asking.
Go ahead. Yeah, you worked on it.
Well, no, just the whole, the whole, that, that property and that get us all great. It's very exciting.
Well, yeah, that's Joanna. And certainly staff had a monstrous part in getting that going.
It is, it is good to see. A couple of things I'll point out before we go to the vote. It's nice to see a plan go from kind of conceptual to policy changes to help facilitate it, to looking at guidelines to make sure. And I appreciate all of the safeguards in there because it's, there are many landmines between trying to figure out how to create an environment where a business wants to be and then actually having it come in. And they're, they take all forms. But certainly, you never, ever want to put your taxpayers' money at risk unnecessarily. But you certainly do want to incentivize to, and I use that word maybe with a lowercase i, incentivize businesses to be here, whatever that looks like, whether it's environmental, whether it's a little bit of, you know, signing bonus, if you want to call it that, you know, like to use a sports analogy. But to, you like that? I mean, I saw you smiling on that one. Yeah. That wasn't directed to you, but I'm glad you got that. That's great. But, but to see now that the, the plan's moving forward. So, we look forward to having yet another good employer in our town. And maybe this is a good thing to help create a little bit of balance between business and residential in terms of tax base. So, with that, it's all right with everybody. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right. That passes unanimously.
I'll tell you, I'd like to say I'm excited also about this, especially being, this is the first one, as we well know, to, to get cash property moving. It's, I always look at it as the penguin situation. There's all the penguins are standing up there on an ice floe waiting for one to jump. Here's a company, well, and then they all jump in and get food.
Yeah.
But, but here's a company that's jumping. And we need to help them jump.
Very good, very good.
I'm really excited.
All right. We now move to public hearing number three. And our assistant town manager or one of the two, Mr. Sean Purvis, is ready to go. So, Mr. Purvis, take it away.
Yes, sir. Mayor, all of members of town council, before you as a public hearing and then request to approve a, the closing of a right of way. This is a Wilcon Way. It's a cul-de-sac located on the south side of Energy Drive. And this is over in the business park just off of Shiflin. So, you can see this is the right of way to be closed. It is not developed. It was originally proposed to be developed to provide adequate frontage for the industrial sites around, that you can see around it. Since that time through the development process, a lot of these have been reassembled into a larger site. And Energy Drive now provides adequate frontage for the property. We've, staff has reviewed it. We're retaining all utility easements within the existing right of way currently and plus adding the access. Let me show you the, whoops, I went back too far. This is a new easement that's to provide access to that stormwater control measure you see down there toward the bottom of, of the frame. Again, staff has reviewed it. All easements to be recorded are in the, are in the survey and included on the order to close. And with that, answer any questions you may have. It's the same property owner all around. So, it just, it goes to that development.
So, is the property owner, we're bending the right of way. So, are they going to essentially probably get rid of the cul-de-sac and the?
Yeah. It'll serve their purposes for access into, I guess, for more or less the parking and the cross-access between their sites. It's, this is non-residential. So, commercial sites.
So, it'll be, it'll go back to them?
Yes.
As access to their back of their property.
Right. But we retain easements through there. So, it'll be pretty, pretty open. It'll be more, I think I said, it's more or less a driveway, correct?
Yeah. It'll be free of buildings and structures.
Exactly. That's correct. But it's not, it'll be the property owner's responsibility.
Is there currently, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're fine. Go ahead. You had the floor.
Is there, is there currently a plan that's been submitted for this?
Yes, there has. So, they're gone through the plan review. Staff's reviewed us on, I guess, multiple times and multiple levels. So, everything's in, in order and in place. And it just, it was no longer needed because the frontage wasn't there. So, it actually facilitates the project moving forward and hopefully presents a better project for the, for the developer.
Do we know what that project is? What is it? Are we, are we allowed to talk about it?
Imagine this time we, Amanda, we are, it's gone through TRC, the engineers here. I mean, if he, you can, he can respond to it.
Call this Project Energy?
Everybody gets codenamed today. Yeah. Why don't you come on up if you don't mind and just, please state your name and address for the records. Since, and, and just to make it more straight up, I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll get you to put your name down on the sheet.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right.
My name is Patrick Kiernan, Jones and Kinnon Engineering. Mostly, I just wanted to say thanks to Sean. This was a new process for me. And he made it super, super easy to follow through with. The project at hand is Peak City Business Park. So, the project that you see now, which is seven different industrial lots and a stormwater lot, those are being combined into two separate projects essentially by the same owner. The Wilcon Way road itself, all the asphalt and the cul-de-sac is going to stay. All the utilities are going to stay in place. We're simply going to use that as essentially a trunk and parking lots are going to branch off of it. So, it'll kind of feel like an entrance into that portion of the site. And they'll maintain maintenance of it and dress it up and make it look pretty and all that. So...
All right. Thank you. Well, any, any, we'll ask.
I had a question for Sean. So, there's, it's unlikely in 20 years, 30 years, we'll have to undo this, right? Once it's built in a certain way?
That's unlikely. Once the buildings are up and everything, it's, I mean, you know...
This will just be a private drive essentially.
Yeah, it's a private drive.
And it's, it's a single.
With an easement under it. So...
Yeah, the easements will still exist. So, I mean, we have access to our utilities and everything there.
And this, and the owner's going to own these and lease them out? I know that was what his original.
More than likely. And I'm not in on the, the project details. I was just handling the...
It's wonderful to see this move ahead. You know, I've been here forever. And so is this project. So...
It'll be good. The, the closing the right of way does help the project move forward. I mean, there was some design issues. And so, this helped it. Closing this helped make the facilitate the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Kiernan, would you come up and just finish the, the form here and correct if I spelled your name wrong, which I'm guessing I may, may have. I did? Really? Nice.
Oh, it's going to go to his head now.
It is. It is. Yeah. Never be able to get me out of the room.
Two doors right there.
Oh, is it a double door? Okay, we're fine. All right, well, not having anyone actually signed up, no, you just leave her here. Be fine, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Kiernan. If, I'll entertain a motion.
Go ahead. Make the motion.
You, you want one?
I'll make a motion.
We got two, that's all right. We got two, doesn't matter what order they're in. Any, any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, and we now move to old business, except there is none, so we move to unfinished, except there is none, so we now move to new business, where our town manager wants to talk about a local act.
Thank you. So one of the things that we do, especially when the legislature's in session, is keep an eye on what's happening on Jones Street and what local acts are being considered, either in the House or the Senate. And there are currently two bills, local acts that have been filed in the House, one for Albemarle and the other for Mooresville, not Morrisville, but Mooresville, that would grant to those cities the authority to, the council to ask the voters if they want to enact a quarter cent local option sales tax. So the question for the council is, do you want to ask our legislative delegation to introduce a local act similar to Mooresville and Albemarle that would essentially give this council the ability to go to voter referendum, and there's, there's very few things for which you can ask the voters for their input like this. The revenue from this tax is restricted to transportation improvement, so we hear loud and clear from our citizens that they want transportation improvements. We see that in the surveys. You see, you hear that from your constituents. The object here is to give you all another tool in your toolbox to try to figure out a way to fund the $117 million, I think is the number that's in my head, in transportation improvements in our capital improvement plan. The money needs to come from somewhere, and this will just give you the opportunity, if the legislature passes it, to ask the voters if they want this tax. So that's what I have for you. We have not done any, we've not done the analysis to predict the revenue stream or anything. We just want to know, is this something you want to pursue or let it go?
All right, so there's the pitch. I'll open up for discussion. Who, who has a thought or comment or question?
I think it certainly can't hurt to ask for something like this. I mean, it's the number one thing on our, on our survey, when the survey came out, as in issues, transportation and transit issues. It was the number one thing on the Community Health Needs Assessment that just, we just received the results on recently, and Western Wake is transportation issues. So I think this, if passed, would be a good thing to ask voters. If, if this is their main concern, then this is one of the ways to solve it, to help with it.
All right. Any other thoughts, anyone?
So I, I agree with that, and it's a local sales tax, too, which is, you know, you're buying something, then that's what you're doing, so how you're supporting your town. So I've not looked to see who the bill sponsors are, to see where Wake County delegation is on that, but very likely if our delegation thinks it's good, you know, it's something that I think we should pursue as well. So there's no harm in doing that, based on what the issue is.
And I, I believe if we move ahead, one of the good things about this is it is a sales tax, which, well, the downside is it does impact the lower income a little bit more than the higher, to a degree, but we have a lot of people coming from out of Apex. All you have to do is go over to Costco on Sunday or Saturday, and you'll see there's people from everywhere. So we might as well get the tax, they're riding on our streets, using our infrastructure, so from that standpoint, I think they can help, help pay for it. So it's good for the citizens, our citizens.
And if you don't mind, I'll just direct that comment. For clarity, Mr. Town Manager, if Costco generates revenue and sales tax revenue that goes to the county, if this were to pass through the General Assembly and the council approved to put it on a referendum, and it got on a ballot, and then it passed, and when, then we imposed that quarter cent, Wake County would collect the taxes as they do for all sales taxes?
The State Department of Revenue would.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. But the example that Councilman Jensen used, Costco shoppers would help fund street improvements. Not just them, but.
Right, a quarter cent of sales tax would come to the town as opposed to, right now, the, the rest of the sales tax gets, gets pooled and then redistributed throughout the county based on, on population. So this would be specific, if it's, if it's generated here in Apex, that quarter cent comes to Apex.
And it would, so it would apply no matter where someone lives, they, if they come to visit, as you said, they're using our streets, so.
Point of sale.
Why not help participate in that? Okay. All right, thanks for the clarification. I just want to make certain that was clear.
I just want to be thankful that I was right.
All right. Any other thoughts or comments or questions?
Yeah, I suppose I'm also in favor of invest, or asking for this power. I'm not sure whether I'd want to utilize it if we did get the power, because I, I really want to know what fraction roughly Apex versus people outside Apex would use it, what fraction income-wise as an estimate would use it, because I don't necessarily see it as a better revenue source than like a property tax increase, not that I want to do that, but like what that would be. So, yeah, hopefully there'll be some information that we would have if we decide to proceed with this to know, is it good policy or not? But as far as having it as a tool to use, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that and happy about that, but yeah, using, go ahead and using it, I'd want to know a lot more information.
Okay, good, good comments. Anything else? All right, I'll ask for the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, just checking, do you need anything else on that matter, or you feel like you're?
Yes, sir. I, we'll, we'll contact our delegation and.
All right.
Provide that information to the council, so I know that some of you are in fairly frequent contact with the legislative delegation, just to.
Okay.
Let them know what, what you're thinking.
And if, if we find out which committee that's going to, maybe you could let us know who is on that committee. We may be able to individual reach out to some of them. All right, thank you very much. I'm, I'm wondering if there might be an error in the agenda. There's no closed session tonight, is that?
Isn't that true?
I say that tongue-in-cheek because we've been to closed session, I don't know how many meetings in a row, so it's nice to not go into closed session, and guess what? We're at the end of our agenda, so with no further business to handle tonight, I declare our meeting adjourned.